Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our November 2nd, 2021 Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting in order. Commissioner Andrews for those who are in the day.
Yes, Father. We thank you so much for your many blessings. We thank you for our view of the county and that we live. We thank you for the beautiful weather we have experienced today. We pray that you will give us wisdom to make good decisions tonight. We pray that you will bless each and every one of our citizens. We thank you, Lord, that their people be concerned about their love for government and what goes on in their home. And we thank you, Lord, for them tonight. And we pray that you would bless us and keep us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Please join us for a pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item in our agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from our regular session of October 19th, 2021, and approval of the minutes from our planning session of October 11th, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the regular session minutes of October 19th, 2021, and the planning session minutes of October 11th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next is our appearance of citizens.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item in our agenda this evening under old business is the second reading of a special events facility alcohol license of Christopher Dolan. In this business is the birch on Highway, excuse me, the birch on 27. The location is 15142 Highway 27 North, Hamilton. The license applied for was special events facility alcohol. It does meet qualifications. The recommendation from the sheriff's office was approval. The special use permit was approved on June 1st of 2021. Would the applicant like to make any comments or suggestions?
I don't think any comments are necessary. You just, we should go ahead and win.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition or in favor of the applicant decision? If there's no comments, then we'll close the public hearing and take action. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion too.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item in our agenda this evening is another second reading. This is also for a special events facility alcohol license. This is a Nicholas Poe. The name of the business is Magnolia State Blue Springs. The location is 5929 Georgia Highway 116, Hamilton. The license applied for was a special events facility alcohol. It does meet qualifications. A special use permit was approved on June 1st of 2021. The recommendation from our sheriff's office was approval. Would the applicant like to make any further comments or suggestions?
I'll just say we need it. It's part of the process, and carriers are not allowed to bring it in, so we have to have it supervised and bring it in before.
Thank you. Are there any individuals who would like to speak in favor or opposition of applicant speaking?
None.
At this time, we'll close that public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the alcohol license for the code.
Okay. I will second that motion. Any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item in our agenda this evening is under new business, and this is for our financial statement for September of 2021, and this was provided for our review on October, October 19th of 2021. And I believe Mr. Chat Spain is here this evening to ask if there are any questions from the board. Are there any questions from Mr. Chat?
None.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the financial statement for September 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item in our agenda this evening is an appointment for the planning commission. A vacancy exists on the planning commission due to the resignation of Chris Littner. The term expires December 31st of 2024. This appointment is for the district by position, and Commissioner Andrews has an individual in mind to nominate.
I'd like to nominate Mark Harris. Mark is a young man who grew up here in Harris County. He is, he works for Southern Company. He has degrees from the University of Alabama, from Mercer University, and he's eager to get involved, and I think this will provide some diversity on our planning commission. And he's a very smart young man, and I look forward to him serving in uniform, so I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll say.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item in our agenda this evening is a request for a tax refund. There's one request this evening, and this is for Robert Jackson Wade at 158 Rushing Raider Way, North Portson, in the amount of $79.60 as an added loan tax. The reason was it was a mail-in payment for CarTag renewal in advance of a birthday, but sold the Honda on 9/21. The tax commissioner agrees, and the board of tax assessors agrees with refund. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We refund Mr. Wade by the $79.60.
Okay. I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item in our agenda this evening is a resolution to accept Mulberry Crossing Drive, Oak Grove Way, and Hertz Court in Mulberry Crossings, Phase 2. All documents necessary for the acceptance of Mulberry Crossing Drive, Oak Grove Way, and Hertz Court in Mulberry Crossing, Phase 2, have been received, and a resolution of acceptance for these roads has been prepared for consideration. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor? The next item in our agenda this evening are project updates, and our county manager, Mr. Dowling, will lead us through the details.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, here are the updates, the projects that Harris County Board of Commissioners and county staff are working on. This listing that we found on our website, Harris County Board of Commissioners. The first one, number four, complete the Unified Land Development Code that is on the agenda tonight for, for second reading and consideration. Number six, design and provide licenses for a new EMS facility and a volunteer car department station in the northwest Harris Business Park. An RFQ or request for qualifications for architectural services has been distributed. The deadline to accept qualifications for architects is November 19th. We'll oversee those qualifications and then provision Harrison one, so they can begin the design of that new EMS volunteer car station in the business park. Number 12, the annual LEV resurfacing program. GDOT has approved the list the county submitted of the roads to be resurfaced, and we have, we did receive our check from GDOT in the amount of almost $894,000. So that is our banking account. We will be bidding out those resurfacing projects in January. The board will approve in February. The contractor should begin in March, and we should be finished with the resurfacing program in June, the end of the fiscal year. Number 19, develop Elwin Park. This is an ongoing project. It has made great strides the last two or three weeks. We've ordered permanent gates, various road and white finding signage, a light aerator that we've constructed to dock. We're in the process of constructing a maintenance facility, pavilion, performing a lot of lane clearing activities at the park. We're going to have a soft opening during January of 2022, and it will be an ongoing program and project for many years, adding pavilion here and there, perhaps other amenities. Number 23, Phase 4 of the Manor War Railroad Recreation Trail. Phase 4 from behind the high mountain, the old Mount Creek Inn to the Calaway Country Store is almost finished. To put the finishing touches on Phase 4, it should be finished by late November and open for the public in early December, including the rehab of the old bridge over 27. So that's almost finished. We're hoping to have like a ribbon cutting ceremony the first week in December. The date's not been settled yet, but make a ribbon cutting ceremony late, early December, maybe the first week in December to celebrate that milestone of getting the Manor War Trail from downtown Pot Mountain to the Calaway Country Store. Phase 5 is being worked on from the Calaway Country Store to downtown Pot, Hamilton, Hamilton, in front of the Carver School. The design, the survey will be completed this week. The design will take the next couple of months. We hope to bid that out in February, award it in March, and be finished with Phase 6, Phase 5, Phase 5, probably this time next year, from the country store all the way to Hamilton across the Carver Middle School.
How many total miles is that going to end up being?
From right at 10, from downtown Pot Mountain to the Carver Middle School, right at 10 miles. And this is, Phase 4 and Phase 5 are funded by TESFLOs, the county's TESFLOs, which is upcoming for renewal next May of, of next year. So those are exciting projects, Phase 4 and Phase 5. And we ordered grant for Phase 6 and submitted that this last month to extend it from Carver School, Carver Middle School, to Hudson Mill Room. That's another 1.5 miles. We'll always forget the grant, a Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program grant. We'll don't forget that probably next spring. Very competitive grants. Number 41, construct a replacement waterworks administrative facility. The board approved the design back in October, and the project's being designed and should be bid out maybe late next month. Number 43, install water lines and grid drive using federal ARP funds. That project is being designed completion by June of '22. Number 44, begin Phase 1 of the renovations to the courthouses in TESFLOs, between 19 funds. The design is being completed by the end of this month. It should be done out in December, but work during February, and the entire Phase 1 of the courthouse renovation project should be finished by late June of next year. That's only Phase 1 of five phases, and there's some federal ARP funds involved with that. That is the highlights of the 55 projects the county is working on. Again, this list of 55 projects is on the county's website for public review. You can tell the county's SLOs, the loss collections for the most recent month was higher than last year, but more than last month. And so that's about the admin report. We have any questions before they happen?
Ray, do you want to ask one question? On the TESFLOs?
Yes.
That we will be voting on in May. Could you check with Brittany Allen to make sure? I thought that I saw a communication that there were some public meetings, and that the executive committee will go back again to determine which project, so it doesn't mean yet that all three of our projects will be on the referendum.
Right. Right now, all three projects are on the final list.
Yes, they're on the final list.
But it's not guaranteed to make it to the referendum yet.
Correct. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions, Mr. Dowling?
Do we have the October, it's called, building permits?
No, 16. 16. Any other questions? Mr. Board, you have any questions? No, Chairman. I do have a litigation matter for executive session. I understand there may be a personnel matter too for executive session, but I understand we have a hearing at 7:00, so I'll defer to you on timing. Well, we will take a quick recess until 7:00, and then we'll have our public hearing. We're getting ready to call our public hearings this evening in order. The procedures for this, we'll call the public meeting in order, then we'll have the reading of the application, which will be followed by the presentation by the applicant for their representatives, followed by comments of individuals in favor of the application, then followed by comments of individuals in opposition to the application. After that, there will be a summary or rebuttal or final comments by the applicant. Once that takes place, we will close the public hearing, and we will take action. So we'll call our first public hearing in order tonight. This public hearing is for a rezoning application of Charles and Pamela Carlisle. The address is 870 Grant Road, Catala, and they would like to rezone 2.10 acres of a 6.28 acre parcel map 062B, parcel 073, land lot 212, land district 18. They would like to rezone from C4, which is highway commercial, to A1, which is agricultural and forestry. The present use is a vacant field. The proposed use would be to build a home. The planning commission's recommendation was approval. Our staff recommendation was also approval. While the Carlseles hear this evening?
Yes.
If y'all would like to step up and vote. If y'all would like to share any information with us this evening, it would be appreciated.
Well, you got something to go with it. Say that we want to rezone that backfield 2.1 to, to agricultural.
We, there's a mobile home that was grandfathered in when we bought the place, and we've been living there and that on the property because it was grandfathered in. And we're able to rezone a portion of that, be able to build a house back there. We've been having that for almost 30 years.
Can that mobile home remain on the commercial side of it?
It would if we would see it out for, redoing it for off space.
Okay. Are there any? Are there any individuals who would like to speak in favor? Or are there any individuals who would like to speak in opposition of that? All right. And I'm sure you don't have any final comments you'd like to share with us this evening then. Okay. Well, this time we'll close the public hearing and we'll take action. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one question, and it may be to, I'm not sure who to direct this question, but based on wanting to move the 2.1 acres out of the 6.28 acres, how would that fit into our new codes? Lee? Or, I mean, would this not be allowed to do on these new proposed codes? Or do you, or is that something we need to take a look at? I'm just curious.
It would not, it would not be allowed to be allowed.
All right.
It would require a different process and different dimensions.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The next item in our agenda, the next public hearing in our agenda this evening is an application to for a text amendment to the Code of Ordinances. The applicant is Harris County Board of Commissioners. The purpose was to rewrite zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and associated codes pertaining to land development to create a Unified Development Code, UDC, to implement the Harris County Comprehensive Plan and associated county land development policies. The planning commission recommendation was approval as written with one addition indicating short-term vacation rentals are required to be registered with the county, and that parking is limited to two cars per first bedroom and one car for each additional bedroom. The staff recommendation was approval as written, initial to PC, recommendations revised as 1028, 2021. Brian, do you have any information you'd like to share with us?
I'm going to let Lee start first.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am Lee Walton, project manager with Wood. We are consultants to the Community Development Department. We have worked through the two-year process leading up to this point on the Unified Development Code, and we also provide assistance with review and rezoning of various requests and other matters. If it's okay, I thought I would start, I'll keep brief, but I thought I would start just by recapping the process we've gone through to get to this point, and then hit highlights on community development department suggestions or proposed modifications associated with your consideration tonight that you've received in memo format, and so I'll highlight those from the end of the hearing. So starting with the process, we began in December 2019, almost two years ago, with go-ahead and contract from our consultant standpoint to prepare a Unified Development Code as a modification to the existing county codes concerning zoning and subdivision regulations to pull it together into a single standard format of a development code document. Then in January 2020, we had listening sessions with you and department devs and steering committee to start the process. Those were documented and posted on a official project website, which is housed on the Harris County website and is still active and available for you today. That was established in early winter of 2020. In March of 2020, we had our formal kickoff meeting here at a board commissioners meeting to formally start the process. And then through the spring and summer of 2020, we had a number of focus group meetings and other meetings with our steering committee and discussions. Focus groups, in particular, we had participation from, for fellow, for education, chamber of commerce, local businesses, development authority, utilities, landowners, developers, and general contractors in the focus group type settings. Summaries of those meetings are also posted on the website. And in September 2020, we held public workshops to discuss needs, opportunities, issues to be addressed with this UDC update. That was when we were really having fun with COVID, so we had a combination of virtual and in-person meetings on September 22nd and 23rd. The information was available on the website from as long as that. And we were continuing to promote a community survey web-based that was launched back in the spring that we kept open until October 2020. In October, we held what we call a big idea public meeting, October 22nd at the library, presented at that time the main themes, the main recommendations to be addressed with UDC, and received feedback on those. Then beginning in November 2020 and carrying through March 2021, we drafted the detailed language of each of the 14 articles of the draft UDC as it exists, working with the steering committee, having meetings through that process. That draft was finally reviewed by the steering committee, distributed to the planning commission and board commissioners in April of this year. And in May, it was posted to the county website for review, and on May 3rd, a public open house was held at the community center to offer a public open house opportunity for anyone who wanted to discuss the draft UDC with us at that time. Then, as you will all remember, in May through July, we had all the series of six joint meetings of board commissioners and planning commission to go through each article and discuss the recommendations and language and wording in detail. That was May 24, 27, June 3, 8, 29, and July 15. Then we got to August this year. We made revisions to the UDC based on all those meetings and discussions, and we posted the revised final draft version of the UDC to the website in September in two formats, both clean and showing changes, so that anyone can see what was changed from original ordinance language and also changed by a result of the joint board commissioner, planning commission meetings. Legal advertisement was put in paper on September 23rd to get notice of prior meeting of the planning commission and this meeting. October 20th, we had a public meeting of planning commission, which you're aware of, which you decided in the near years, not until that's our timeline summary for where we have been so far in this process. In terms of community development staff recommendations, as in the memo we've provided in sort of the preamble, community development staff recommends Unified Development Code for adoption, it will significantly assist staff in processing and addressing development proposals that come before staff, and there's a number of other reasons cited. We do that, so our staff does that, recommending consideration of several modifications as documented in the memo, but primarily for in purpose of internal consistency within the document. So very quickly, in Article 2, staff recommends consolidating all the use descriptions associated with single-family residential into a single line. There's currently separate lines in the use table for residential subdivision by minor subdivision and by major subdivision. That was a carryover. It actually is not the appropriate way to do it as we considered this. So we propose just a single line in the use table, single-family detached residential component. That would be on.
Follow me, you have a page here.
I'm sorry.
Should be pushing up to your third page.
Yeah. In Article 2, this is the memo of, of October 28th.
I never had this from the claim, from the development department.
But you're asking, you're asking what, where it is in the order.
Yeah, I want to see it.
It's within, it's within Table 2.1. I'm not sure the page of Table 2.1.
It could be on the second page.
Second, Table 2.1, which does residential uses and the districts within which they are. And so it's, again, it's, it doesn't change anything in terms of intent. It simply clarifies, I believe, with respect to the remainder of the UDC. That's Article 2 recommendation. In Articles 3 and 11, there are provisions concerning agritourism, and the proposal we have is for the intent of clarifying the intent of new language for agritourism. Essentially, agritourism is an accessory use to a farm, so that's understood. We want to propose language that will make it absolutely clear that agritourism can be proposed by an applicant in a master plan format, including multiple agritourism uses within the same master plan that can be approved all at once and then executed at the applicant's time of choosing in the future. So we want to make sure that that intent is clear, that additionally, agritourism uses not specified in that section can be proposed for consideration. So agritourism is not limited to only those uses listed in that section. And then additional clarification regarding the actual master plan description from Article 11, what is part of your master plan, simplified with respect to master plan for other special use. use purposes. So those are the actual languages there in the memo. That's the intent. Within Article 4, Table 4-1 is the table that organizes details of lot size, dimensions, setbacks, and so forth. For clarity, we propose in Table 4-1 on the A1 zoning district, changing the text "individual lots" to read "major subdivisions." And that, if you look at the table, then clarifies that for major subdivisions in A1, the proposal is a 5 acre minimum lot size. For minor subdivisions in A1, the proposal remains a 10 acre lot size. That's shown in Table 4-1. And then additionally revising Table 4-1 for the A1RR and R1 districts to increase side setback requirements to 20 feet. And that corresponds to the overall change that is already in the document of an increase to 125 feet for a lot width. I'm sorry, this is tedious. And also in Section 40211, there's a statement about minimum acreage requirements for rezoning with respect to rezoning property to A1 from any other district. We propose changing the minimum required acreage from 4 to 5 to be consistent with everything else we're talking about in Article 5. And then adding flexibility for lot widths in circumstances where a proposed lot is on a curved section of a road. If you think geometrically, lots coming off curved sections of roads have different issues involved than lots off straight sections of roads. So we propose language that will allow a reduction from 125 feet to a minimum of 100 foot lot width on curved road sections. There are already provisions for even less lot width that goes through for cul-de-sac and such other circumstances. Then in Article 5, the proposals listed there are primarily for internal consistency regarding minor major subdivision provisions, specifically where there's a definition, the code has been starting with large lot splits, that we propose increasing that from 5 acres qualified as a large lot split to 10 acres qualified as a large lot split, consistent with 10 acre minimum requirement for minor subdivisions. And clarifying additional sections with regards to that. Finally, it's in Article 5, I'm sure you noticed new provisions for conservation subdivisions. That's a more complicated approach, but for those who want to preserve open space in the process of development, it's a new option. We propose adding a bit of language to clarify the purpose and details of the yield plan, which is a important part of the process for conservation subdivisions. And I can go into the details of that later if you'd like, if you question. And there's a couple of typos we found in Article 5 as well. And finally, Article 10 and Article 11. Article 10, a couple of typos that are described there that do not affect the intent. Article 11 proposes a change regarding pre-application review procedure in Section 1110.01 to clarify that the pre-application review will be with the community development department staff, not with the planning commission, which is the firm practice on preapplication meetings currently over the planning state. And that's all. Are we happy to entertain any questions? Don't forget to break in.
Been a long, long, long process. Any questions from our panel?
I was just going to say that maybe soon after. You'll come back. Yeah.
Thank you.
All the, all the Article 3 agriturism, this is what we discussed in our meeting, but it just never got changed in the actual document.
The intent, the changes were made, the intent, but upon reconsideration, we realized it wasn't as clear as it should be. So we proposed additional clearance.
This is what we talked about doing and making sure that you do a best plan.
That's correct.
And then on Article 5, I think I just need a minute to digest some of that. On the Table 430, where it says individual lots, that's where you're changing to major subdivision.
That's correct. Because in the, the options for subdivision land for Article 5 are either major subdivision or not individual lots.
So it's not individual lots.
So that's the use individual lots, you know.
That's still...
I think that's all the questions I have for you right now. I'm sure you'll ask some more later. At this point, we'll start hearing the individuals and your comments. I'm sure a lot of you have made comments in favor or in opposition. So I think these are the things tonight, if anybody wishes to speak, we can start on this side of the room and work across in a orderly manner. One thing I forgot to mention earlier, individuals get up to speak, they'll have a five-minute time period that you can speak freely. Your five minutes is your five minutes. That five minutes cannot be passed along or shared with any other individuals, except there's anyone who would like to speak. We finally had one over here on our side. And if you'll please state your name and address, I mean, in terms of voting.
Are we doing a four or a dix or are we doing anybody too?
I think we'll just do anybody that's ready to start on the table.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. My name's John Dunn. I live in 1621 Lakeview. I know y'all worked hard on this, we had focus groups and trying to put something together that, that I guess is for the good of the county. I don't know if you can ask everybody in the county if that's good or not. I don't know if it's the same thing. But I personally think that there are some good elements and there's some things about it that will hurt your average person. And I think the main thing is, is being a realtor, what we're faced with, and there's a couple of other realtors here, is the housing shortage that we're in. In 2019, we had 3.84 million units. And we were already down. And now we're down, we're down to like 2.9. In Harris County, if you're a realtor, you would understand, you would understand the hard time a realtor has finding affordable houses. Right now, we have a hard time finding houses compared to, we only have 250 houses in a 200, 400,000 range. Now we have 26. 26 houses for everybody that's coming in here looking for houses. I think the main element of this is not allowing the people of Harris County to decide for themselves, that having oversight and a government authority coming in and saying, you know, you're going to take away your rights, we're going to take away your constitutional rights, we're not going to let you decide like we can now how to develop. And the map, the map that we have here covers 90% of the county that would affect this 10 acre area. 90%. So 90% of the county with this new plan, sort of place, can only sell 10 acres. And you couldn't, somebody couldn't, my friends couldn't buy 10 acres of 30 houses like they can now. And most friends that are young, that go to college and want to do that and hang out and get together, they can't do that. It's a small area, very small area, that they can do that. So it really affects the housing shortage. And I think also, it also affects the people that are built in a lot of parts of the county. It's going to affect the land value ratios. There are a certain amount of land value ratios, ratios from VA and FHA land values. And I noticed in the focus group, it was a great focus group, but I didn't see any active military in that focus group. I didn't see any veterans on that meeting. They might have been. There probably was some veterans, but I didn't see the active duty military. And then the final thing I want to say, there's a lot of other things. I could cover all my bases. We've got the whole series on tonight, so we've got a whole, full time there. Could cover all my bases tonight. Anyway, the final thing is, is that economics. I really can't find, I can't find anybody, nobody anywhere that can tell me the economic impact of this. If we had a comprehensive economic impact plan, which there might be one, but nobody has shown me, of what this is going to cause, what the positives, negatives, I think that would be huge. So anyway, I'm going to keep mine short and let people know more about this than me. Thanks.
Mr. Commissioner, other valued members, thank you all for taking your time this evening to hear our faults on this. My name's Trent Griffin. I live in Charlotte, Georgia. Trent Griffin. I live in Charlotte, Georgia. I'm one of the owner and operators of ReSmart Building, local hometown custom home builder. Drive on a couple of Mr. John's points that he was just making. We have a list here of 32 active jobs. That is what our business has in progress right now, from under contract to punch lists trying to be completed. This would effectively, underneath this new zoning, eliminate nine of those jobs. So, Mr. John, I don't think this was approached through the standpoint of economic impact. I think it was approached through conservation, which is important to this county. But we can't sacrifice the economics of our businesses and the construction industry quo, which is what sends people to the Mexican restaurant and fills up cars at the corner store. So I ask that you just consider that very highly. It's my opinion that these new zoning ordinances would drive people to the R1 districts on the southern part of the county as it's designed to do. Once you eliminate the homes that we are building in the rural area of the county, this would do nothing to drive those prices up through the roof of homes there, forcing the sons and daughters of Harris County to then move further out, which won't be an option because of the 10 acre minimums that they can't afford to purchase. These are my concerns about the economic impacts, all while in the process of reducing the value of the agricultural landowners operating now. Value in land, large portions of the land, is in the utility that you have with that property. That is, how many times can you subdivide? What can you do with that property? Question that I have, if I'm not incorrect about this, in 2019, I believe that we put together a comprehensive development strategy that was put into place for this community. I question why we are so quickly moving away from that economic development strategy to move into something totally different. 2019 seemed to be a good plan. This board seemed to agree with it. I understand some of you may not have been on it, however, it was deemed to be a good option for the county at that time. This is a sweeping change to what was put into place underneath that comprehensive plan. If you look at the map that's on there, the amount of rural property, the amount of agriculturally zoned properties that are going to be affected, when that plan was put into place, it was not input into place with these zoning requirements. It wasn't. We need to start back with the comprehensive plan, economic development strategy, and then incorporate some of these changes that are being proposed. I don't know if the cart was put before the horse in 2019 or it was put before the horse now, but it has been. And in my personal opinion, I don't know why we are walking away from the plan that was put into place at that time. You're going to hear from a variety of local experts, talk to a lot of people in and around this community, from, excuse me, but your box building developers, from your local real estate expert brokers, to the surveyors and most trusted consultants in this county, to your small custom home builders, to your medium-sized custom home builders. They're all going to stand before you tonight and make the case that this is bad for our industry when it comes to the development and growth of new home construction. And I think that individuals who have come and done an excellent job and worked extremely hard, that don't understand our community as well, I think we have a right, we should be heard. We know what this county needs because we hear the demand. We have it walking through our door every single day, and this is going to be devastating to them. I just think it serves to note that the zoning that we voted, y'all voted on earlier, unanimously voted on to the point earlier that that would not be allowed, for example. I think that's just a shame. So with that, I will let us move on without you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
My name is Craig Greenhorn. I live in 1568 Bartlett's Ferry Road in Forts, Georgia. And I come tonight to speak to you as a private owner. I like John, I'm a real estate broker, I'm a builder, developer, and I was also a member of the steering committee that developed the UDC that you're discussing tonight. There's been a lot of work that's gone into these ordinances, and I'm a strong proponent of market-based competition that provides several choices for consumers and property. Providing options to be more efficient for both residential and commercial development are important and provides citizens the opportunity to sit the highest and best use of their property while maintaining the rural feel that everyone wants. Private property rights, I would say, are among the most important freedoms granted to us in the United States and in the Constitution. So we worked hard to create some great opportunities. Those include senior housing development, rural housing development, some higher density, and a variety of other options for all types of housing. I support from individual builders and people building their own home to a small home builder to a tract builder and everything in between. That creates a market. And some prefer the feel of subdivisions while others prefer the feel of larger tracts and all the uses in between. Our committee discussed the pros and cons of dozens of items in this. As you know, this is an extremely complex, complicated document. There are a lot of good things that we did come up in the UDC. However, like has been spoken before me, I would suggest the changes such as the 10 acre minimum for agricultural property that was just introduced after our committee, that needs to be corrected. This fundamentally reduces private property owners' rights to dispose of their property. The current rule that we have currently, as demonstrated tonight, allows property owners to write through a minor subdivision of up to three parcels while maintaining an agricultural zoning. And with an agricultural zoning, there's certain bundles of rights you can do in agriculture that you can't do in a residential. That might be having a motorhome or having animals or other things that people deem important, they can't do in a residential setting. We modified it in our group from three to four minor subdivisions without the rezoning. So we increased people's ability and their rights. This provided more choice, and it's outside of political process. This new 10 acre proposal would require someone to rezone their property in order to settle a portion of it. This lowers potential values, changes potential use, and needs to be fixed before we adopt it. I mean, you could take, you could have neighbor versus neighbor, and you're going to have a bunch of rezoning cases if you adopt it that are unnecessary. Some of the commercial size requirements are too large and don't support real-life, practical, common sense, market needs, such as those provided in the zoning tackle. And I would, that's specifically to C1 with four, C3 with three, C4 with four. I do some, build some family dollar, dollar trees and other things. We've never used more than an acre or two acres in a commercial zoning. So requiring three and four, it's too much of a burden. It's just not really practical and I'm not. Additionally, the PRD category doesn't create a practical application that's achievable in terms of commercial completion compared to the residential... in terms of commercial completion compared to the residential build out. So this is, it's actually the opposite of how a market based approach works. Rooftops, residential units, support and create a market for the commercial development. So this needs to be readdressed. That's on the PRD. And finally, I've just noted a few specific examples tonight, but there are a lot of others that could be, probably need to be corrected or addressed. So I would humbly ask you as a member of the committee, that you table this adoption tonight until these and other items are corrected, and I appreciate your time.
My name's Edgar Adams. I'm a business owner and a local business owner and landowner here in Hairs County. First want to say I mirror the appreciation of some of the other speakers of the word set part, and also want to speak out on a couple of issues that must propose you, you know, starting with the 10 acre minimum proposal and even the five acre proposal for the range of subdivisions in A1. The 10 acre, the 10 acre minimum is a 500% increase to the minimum lot size in A1. The five acre is a 250% increase to the minimum lot size in A1 zone. The proposed 125 foot road frontage width is a 250% increase to the existing 50 foot road frontage minimum. We have a minimum 60 foot county road right away with it. And quite frankly, if I can drive head on in another car at 55 miles an hour and be safe on 60 feet, I think that myself and the clients that I represent can enter, ingress and egress out of the property on 60 feet as well. While the changes restrict smaller and private landowners, diminishing the asset value of their properties has been unheard of, the opposite is going to be true for larger developers. Reducing their required lot sizing to one acre under the new R2 zoning provision will help mitigate construction costs and also increase the lot yield on a piece of property. So we're talking about trying to slow the development of Harris County, but what we're actually doing is going to be increasing the developability of these larger tracts. With grading techniques, that with this increased lot yield and call for smaller lots, it's going to be funneling custom home builders to the tract home market. In Harris County, we have some 50% plus of the total parcels in Pine Mountain Valley that are on. Would Pine Mountain Valley be better off without these residents or more residents like them? In Ellis Lake, we have 70% plus of the current parcels that are on less than five acres. And would Ellis Lake be better off with these residents or more residents like them? We have an estimated 75 to 85% of Forts and Antioch parcels on less than five acres. And would the Forts and Antioch areas be better off without these residents or residents like them? The current, Mr. Greenlaw mentioned about the current minor subdivision laws, and you'll probably hear some more about that. And I know there's been some, some talk about that as of late. The, all of the minor divisions that have gone forth, been submitted to Harris County and approved by Harris County, have been done so under the current interpretation, the current accepted interpretation of the guidelines as they've been directed to interpret those regulations. Now, without throwing the baby out of the bath floor, should we look at changing the way we interpret the current regulations? Or throw them all out and replace them with a set of regulations that, quite frankly, is hazard to be thrown together and stands to affect such a large group of people?
My name is Dave Arison. I'm a resident of Coca Lake. I am a former large volume builder and a former developer of large scale as well. As we approach the public hearings on this proposed UDC for Harris County, I'd like to suggest a different perspective on the development of Harris County, specifically regarding residential development. Every healthy community needs a balance of residential housing, commercial support regions, and job based industry or office service. Harris County has always had a strong bias for residential housing using a rural acreage based perspective. Unfortunately, such perspective continues to be the default bias for the county, even as the population of the county has grown tremendously in the past 20 years and continues to experience significant growth pressures. Commendably, the proposed UDC has some minor allowances for areas of greater density. That's a start. More options should be considered, but honestly, I remain surprised that a professional organization would not openly push Harris County to look at a greater range of options. We have, we're very narrowly restricted to what the rest of the world has. Unfortunately, these increased density areas are also saddled with caveat rules that defeat the whole reason for the zoning densities in the first place, but maybe that is the goal. The most obvious example of these caveats is the proposed PRD zoning, the one zoning classification, which should have the most flexibility to design a really good project. This PRD zoning requires at least 10% commercial zoning set aside. Active proactive establishment of commercial zones before the residential activity can be fully established, and the set aside of large open space amenities and buffers in area that is specifically called out and is supposed to be usable. Can't use, you know, rough terrain, things like that. Add to the commercial development requirement, a minimum of 20 to 25, 20 to 35% of the open space and a minimum lot size of one half acre per lot, with at least 75% of the lots being single family residential, you have created a Frankenstein that is broken before it has ever taken life. The reality of this zoning proposal is excessively punitive to PRD zoning usage. The point that is most likely to, to the point that is most likely never going to be used in real life, this is a significant oversight. With the overhead of sumer support, amenity construction, and the support related to all these amenities, the cost benefit ratio of doing something other than two acres starts to go out the window very quickly and defeats the whole purpose of why it's even in the book. That may be the political goal for the UDC, but the real life impact will be the continued sprawl of growth across Harris County with an endless sea of two acre lots scattered across the county, like most of Southern Lee County, this north of Phoenix City, and quite honestly, large chunks of the Atlanta region. The very thing that most people want to rail against. The people in Harris County want to preserve the rural feel of the county, but doing that at the cost of spreading new houses across every piece of property with equal two acre zoning spacing will be a terrible outcome that the commissioners before me here and the people of Harris County will regret in hindsight 10, 15, 20 years down the road. If that is the vision of Harris County in the future, so be it. If that is not the vision of Harris County for the, for our future, then I recommend that the UDC be tabled and sent back for more work. It is not logical for Harris County to continue growth using a guidebook, which has a default for large acre lots in almost every circumstance. The rest of the world uses a guidebook that is 10 times thicker, has 10 times as many options, and should be used with prudence and intelligent logic, that define what's good for Harris County, not just one, one set rule. Thank you.
My name's Danny Simpson. I live at 373 Palm Street, right in the home. Simpson. Thank you. I'm a partner for Be Smart Building. We are custom home builders and typically build families who want to citizen in Harris County, build what they call their forever home. Increasing the lot size of agriculture's own land, 10 acre minimums, really impact, reduce the number of people who can build their homes here. This obviously has negative effects for our business as well as other local businesses in the county. As stated last meeting, we employ 16 people full time and dozens of subcontractors. This own decision not to be made in the back. It will have unintended consequences that will have real impact on all our businesses. Thank you.
I'm born and raised in the home. And I'm a real estate agent. I do a lot of different things. I have a home, you know, this is what I'm actually a lot. I'm going to go completely opposite of what other real estate agents are going to be. And I'm going to bring a lot of people to here and say, you need more options in your zoning ordinances that will allow ags to add the amount they can add to it, the lots all the way across the county. The problem is that you started from a faulty situation. I mean, the whole process was set up, and I don't believe that from the beginning. Didn't have a big enough steering committee. It was all consolidated with them, with them people that were either part of the government or associated with government in some way, shape, form, or fashion. It might have been private individuals. They served on the planning commission or development. Absolutely nobody on the steering committee that was outside in the rural world bringing ideas. Until now, you failed to address agritourism, failed to address any kind of economic development, you failed to address most of the commercial processes. We just left out so much and we're concentrated on residential development, and the default has always been two acre lots. That's an arbitrary knock. Two acre lots is two acre lots, and people would have said that right, like the way you know, this institution in the early 2000s, a lot of them did. It's an arbitrary knock. You should let science take that. If they're going with one acre lot, they're going with a half acre lot, that's what you did. You reserve the rest of the county. Ags should be ag, and ags should be bigger. I think you ought to be able to have 10 acres plus your house so you can wing it in the conversation. But if you want to rezonate, rezonate. I mean, that's the remedy for this whole problem. You can't let what happened on Winfrey Road where somebody bought a tract land, cut it up into three tracts, and then sold it to somebody else, who then cut it up into three more tracts, and suddenly you've got nine tracts where one tract was, there's no oversight over there taking it for granted. That can't happen. So you need more options that allow, what Mr. Arison said. Even if you pass this the way it stood today, you'd still be 15 years behind, 20 years behind before you need to be. I mean, you don't have any kind of brooms, you have no distillers, you have none of that stuff listed in there. Agritourism, the master plan, what if the master plan changes? And my wife come up here, and I say that as somebody who's had to come with a special use program, one piece of land that already had a special use program. I mean, it's just, it's a never ending cycle. It's not that easy. We're a county that, we're unfriendly. We don't like it easy for anybody to do this. So I say that as a resident of Big Bend, you see, nothing that we've done is easy. Even on agritourism, we had to create that ordinance. And I mean, that's a, that's a crappy ordinance, and I'll admit it's a crappy ordinance, but it's because you make the citizens have bad ordinances.
Thank you for your time. My name's Taylor Griffin. 220 Northwood Avenue, Pine Mall, Georgia. One thing I had said to me, and it was a second, I was just wording, you can rezone A1 after this goes through. That is a false pretense unless you're going to have a slot zone. The over seventh option of the county is going to be A1. You're not going to allow one neighbor to rezone to a two, five acre tract and then deny the other. So that would simply create, the only places you could rezone would be the areas that are touching something that's already zoned out, in a nutshell. So I feel like they're completely restricting, and the smokescreen of just rezone is really a nonexistence from my way of looking at it. I am against the 10 acre. I think that is an extreme, 400 plus percent increase. Many things have been set tonight. I don't want to repeat the same exact things, but I agree with most things that were said tonight. I'm not saying there aren't room for improvements or changes in what we have set out, but I do think this is an extreme version. And I do not believe that this is, this document is complete at this time. There are still changes being talked about and into some way we pray we voted on this time. That is my opinion. I don't want to waste your time. We go first.
I'm John Mitchell. I'm a resident of 26 Gray Fox Court in Catalina. I'll say I promptly oppose to any zoning changes in the UDC that would facilitate or encourage high density housing construction in Harris County. So I'll spend up front for reasons that have been repeatedly laid out before this commission over the past two years or more, and I won't repeat them for you tonight, okay? For respect for your time. So trying to be a responsible citizen and keep track of what's going on in this topic of zoning in the UDC, I subscribe to an email feed offered on the Harris County website. And tonight I learned that the emails there that have been coming to me are selected and forwarded by a bot, not a human. Now, I'm not a technician, but I understand that to be something that automatically selects emails and sends them out to a list of email recipients. And this may explain why so many of them are stale news. I want to give this illustration to suggest that there may be others like me foolishly relied on this Harris County email service to keep me up to date on what's going on in Harris County and weren't referring to the live website itself, which is now, I understand, where I should have been all along. Particularly on this issue of UDC and various subtopics therein. So while I acknowledge that it's very difficult to get people to show up to public comic meetings, the meeting held last year or so at Harris County High School is evidence that when the public knows about a topic that is sensitive and of interest to them, they do in fact turn out in big, big numbers. Referring to the timeline that the contractor just laid out for us, as best I can see, there's only been one public meeting held in Harris County since the actual wording and the amended wording of this UDC posted to the public, and that was a few days ago in October. I may have missed one, but that's what it sounded like to me. This might be an instance when the commission should consider how they're getting the word out and maybe going above and beyond, finding a new way to communicate. For example, how well was social media leveraged in this effort? The CDC, the government agencies that have been working with the pandemic have been leveraging social media aggressively, and it's had good effect. So I ask that the council relook the methods and effectiveness of communicating to the public, the opportunities to comment on the actual wording of the UDC, and for the reasons raised before me tonight, that you table this decision until, as in this UDC, proposed UDC can be addressed. Thank you.
My name is Wanny Langston. 56 Creek Santor, Forts and Georgia, 31808. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak to you now. I would like to say, as part of the record, I am very proud to say that I am the husband of the commissioner, Davey Langston. Very proud. And I understand there's a need for ordinances. I understand that any three of you can't ask any ordinance. Might not be good for Harris County, might not be safe. I'll just throw this out there. The two acre thing is to save green space. Harris County wants to save green space. The actual fact is that two acres is eating up your green space. I would like to address some things I'm sure Lee and his group, he made with you an outstanding job, and this is the first make, because Betsy's never asked me anything about commission business, but she did ask me for one thing about this, and I want to share it with you because I feel very strongly about it. She mentioned the 10 acre agriculture. I called three people who I have huge respect. I called three people who I have huge respect for their opinions. One kind of agree with me, two, we had agreement, disagreements, and that's fine. Disagreements are fine. Beck and I don't own any property in Harris County other than our home. And that may be a good thing now, as this is proposed, that you don't own any small tracts in Harris County, because the possibility is, you buy that property twenty years ago, you may lose money on it today because of the restriction of seven. Having said that, we do own property in Skogee County, and we own property in South Alabama, a rural county, and it is most definitely not out of this restriction. It's very similar to Harris County. Doesn't have to be restricted on that land, we own that. I can tell you, both have been very profitable, and we look forward to being more profitable. Now, I would like to consider to address the things on the ten acre agriculture. Let's say I own ten acres, zone agriculture, I've owned it for twenty years. I've done nothing with it the way that I have. I paid taxes for twenty years, twenty years. So a man comes to me and he said, I wanna, do I don't wanna buy these ten acres? And I said, no, I'm not interested in selling. So a few months later, he come back and he said, I got a solution. He said, sell me two acres, and I get it rezoned and build me a house, and you can keep the eight acres on agriculture. I thought, I said, okay, that's good. So we go to the beginning of development, and I explained it to Brian, and Brian said, why, you can't do that? I asked him why, and he explained. He said, I do have a solution for you, though. You can break that up into two five acre plots. But I got to rezone the five acres I'm keeping. That's not something the government should tell me. I don't want my five acres I'm keeping rezoned. That's not something the government should tell me. Doing that reduces the opportunity for me to get the best return on my property by the restrictions. Now, let's say for twenty years, I've had nine acres, zone agriculture. What can I do with it? It's virtually useless, has no value really, not under the restrictions. That limits my ability again to get the value, the true value of my property. The government shouldn't tell me I can't do something with nine acres. Number three, Harris County has three kids. Parents fight away, and Will said, I want ten acres, and I got agriculture split equally among my three children. Three and a third acres. You tell me, if one of those wants, first off, one of those three and a third acres of zone, gonna be rezoned, can it stay agriculture? If one of those children wanna sell that, my three and a third, how does that affect the other two? Does theirs have to be rezoned? I don't know, you tell me. I'm sure that Wood did a great job. But if, if he was asked about, what, how did you come about this ten acre deal? I think he was saying, I think would be a true statement, that this is what was proposed to me. And that's probably a true statement. My question is, the population in Harris County, according to the recent census, is approximately thirty-four thousand people. My question is this.
Your time is here, Tom.
The gum show.
My name is Robert Hayes. I live at Wildwood Plantation Drive in Catalina. We moved here five years ago in the old area, and we came to Harris County to get two acres, two acre lots. And I would not, I mean, sort of, I would see that change. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas McNerney. I live at 384 Elmwood Drive in Fortson. McNerney. M is in Mike, C is in Charlie, N is in November, E is in Echo, R is in Romeo, N is in November, E is in Echo, W is in Yankee. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk for you tonight. I've lived in Harris County for about twenty-five years now, and I really appreciate Harris County in many ways. I moved here before I realized that there was a two acre minimum. I'm not sure when that came into being. But on this particular rezoning proposal, it's actually not rezoning, it's just a concept for how things should be rezoned. I, I think it hasn't been well put out to the people of Harris County. I don't, I understand, I am absolutely convinced that everything was done according to the laws and the requirements of how it was announced and how it was put forward. I'm sure the contractor who did it did everything absolutely correctly. Having said that, I think the vast bulk of the people in Harris County are, you know, unbelievably unaware of where we are on this particular project. I would, you know, recommend, first of all, that you, that you postpone this and have a real big meeting and publicize it well of what the impact is of these different things, because I don't think that's happened in Harris County. I live right around the corner, or in back of wherever, however you wanna call it, of the Grove subdivision. That has changed dramatically since it was approved, and it's not exactly the same thing that it was when it started. I think anyone should realize that the 185 corridor is gonna be developed. It's gonna happen, no matter what happens in Harris County. And Muskogee County is gonna push to put developments here because they're running out of room. That's a fact, it's gonna happen. But the high density is going to significantly change the concept of living in, in Harris County. And, you know, I'm very concerned about what the impact is on that, you know, just the number of people. I'm very concerned about what it's gonna do to the school district as far as, you know, I think Ms. Andrews, you put out very clearly when you were the superintendent of schools, that just because a family moves into the county, they don't necessarily bring the, the revenue for taxes, just because they have residence, they don't, they don't necessarily bring the revenue that the school district needs. And the same thing goes for safety, you know, police, fire, everything. So the high-density residence areas don't, don't provide what the county needs. Unfortunately, what the county needs is businesses, and we don't seem to be pushing businesses the way, you know, for example, it was proposed when the Grove was, was pushed, is, hey, we're gonna put businesses and put homes around it. That sounds wonderful, except now we're putting homes and there are no businesses. And there's no plan for any businesses. It was proposed to be like Peachtree City, which I've seen, and is very nice. One of the things that Peachtree City did was they have an impact fee. I brought that up when the Grove was proposed. We have never had an impact fee for residences, which would go to help pay for things like water, school, infrastructure. I mean, it doesn't pay for annual stuff, but it does pay for infrastructure. Once again, I suggest that we take a look at impact fee, and as I've said before in this venue, we ought to, you know, put a moratorium on large developments until we take a look at what they're really doing to the county. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
I'm Megan Gunther. I live at 379 Barnes-Mull Road in Hamilton. Actually, I'm gonna talk about acreage, which is surprising, but I'm gonna talk on it a little bit. First, I wanted to talk about agritourism. I understand that the county definitely needs business and stuff in the county, and pushing rooftops to get this commercial development, and I've always been in the belief that we should be focusing more on agritourism and playing to our strengths that we have currently. I noticed on the UDC that we have eliminated breweries, microbreweries, distilleries, and brew pubs from the ordinances, and I would like to reconsider that if we're gonna allow wineries. I would like to think we should also do brew pubs and things, and breweries. The same, same stipulations of growing the wine or the grapes could be the same for hops, so we can focus on agritourism. If you look at Wildleaf and LaGrange, I think it has a lot of business there, and it gives a place for community to visit and hang out. I think we're eliminating a lot of businesses if we write that off completely. Another thing I noticed, that farm dinners are still limited to one a year, which I find a little silly if we're gonna focus on agritourism and you harvest multiple times a year, that we could at least allow a farm dinner twice, maybe three times a year. Food trucks, I was excited to see food trucks on the ordinances, but they are permitted on residential, R1, R2, R3, but you need a special use permit if you are living on agricultural land or are our land. I didn't understand why that would make a difference, and why somebody who has agricultural land would need a special use permit to get a food truck when somebody who lives on two acres in a neighborhood could easily get one. Farmers market. I noticed that farmers markets were limited to working farms of a minimum of five acres, and that fifty percent of the stuff sold at the farmers market has to come from a farm. And I've attended lots of farmers markets in cities and states that I've never attended one actually on a working farm. So are we limiting the place where we can have farmers markets? Are we not allowed them anywhere in Harris County, or would we have to name them something else so that we could allow them? Backyard hens, I know that's a big thing if you are in a group on the Harris County page, farmers page. People are very surprised to move here to find out that they cannot have chickens on their residential land. It doesn't matter how many acres, or if you live in a neighborhood or not, but you're not allowed. And the saying goes, though, as long as no one complains to about you, you can still have them. But people are very surprised that they can come from Columbus and Metro Atlanta and have backyard hens, but come to Harris County, which is still very rural, and not allow chickens. So I would love for us to consider something. I don't know, maybe not neighborhoods, I don't know how that would work, because I know some people don't wanna live next to hens. But I lived in a residential place, I lived on residential land, it was pretty rural, and I could have easily had a hen, but legally not allowed to. I also saw that there's a lot of special use permits in the agritourism. I don't like special use permits. If we're gonna help them, I would like to have clear guidelines to ordinances if we can. Leads too much to the political, my neighbor doesn't want this, and then you have to decide who's more important, and all that stuff like that. So if we could eliminate special use permits as much as possible, I would like that. To go back to the UDC, I have been participating in the UDC meetings, I did the big ID meeting, I filled out a form, I participated in pretty much everything that I could possibly participate because I find this very interesting, and been asking for the ordinances to change for a while. And I will say that having this meeting be the first time we were actually allowed to speak to the commissioners in one big room, and also be in the meeting that you vote on, doesn't seem right. When we do tax increases, we have a separate meeting with the board of commissioners, and we follow them to meet and talk, and then a second meeting with the board of commissioners. I know that the planning commission was supposed to be the first, the first meeting, but I would think that we would enjoy, or people would have more opportunity to come and speak to you like you're doing now, instead of, one night, to do it at least twice, would have been a great opportunity. And also because of COVID changes, it was just, the whole ordeal was completely different, and had to go to the rec center, it was drawn out all day, it was not an opportunity to talk to everyone, agreed, we kinda just was one-on-one, which I did enjoy, though. I am no stranger that I support two acre minimums. I do not like high-density housing in Harris County. I think that we should be preserving our rural integrity. I don't like the PRD. I do like the fact that you would require some commercial development to be built beforehand because of what's happening at the Grove, where we were promised this big tax break, and it's gonna be paying for itself, and now we're getting the houses and the apartments, but no commercial development. So I do like the changes to the PRD. But I will just say real quick, that I do enjoy that you are trying to help this for all of Harris County and increasing the A1 zoning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the segment?
Why not? Linda Dawson, 365 O3, Hamilton. Why would you want to limit something like a farm dinner? Why would you want to limit us to things like that there so easily done and so good for our county, where we have farmers here? That just makes no sense to me. Do things that are good for our county and quit being the county of no. I'm putting back on the chamber hat now, and I've had it off for a long time. But we fought this back in '06. This is my experience. Go back to the days of Lon Marlowe, and I'm surprised, I hate this, wonderful son, he's not here anymore, he went to watch the rain. But Lon and I fought diligently to get agritourism. He was the leader for agritourism way back then. And we fought and fought and couldn't get anything. So one farm dinner? We get a lot more of good wholesome things like that in this county, because we have farmers. It would just make perfect sense to do things that come from the farm and don't limit ourselves to the good things that go on here. And then things that, economic development, we need a whole lot more of that. And back in '06, when I was doing the chamber thing, we could not let our, we couldn't afford to have our children grow up and come back to live here, because they couldn't afford it. And what you're about to do, if you do this tonight, there's no way our children could afford to come back and live here and be productive citizens in this county. They'll have to go someplace else to live. I have two grown children, and I know one of them could never afford to live here in this county, because it's just too expensive. So anything else you'd want to do, please?
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? No. Mr. Walton, Brian, John, come in to me.
Second chief, most importantly, it's serious. The farm dinner requirement is four per year, once per quarter. Just to make sure that's clear.
That was again, Lon, what you said, can you say it again?
The farm dinner requirement, and this is unchanged from what has been voted for quite some time, it's four per year, once per quarter. It's stated as once per quarter, so perhaps that's a good cause for me. Not here to argue that that is the absolute correct or couldn't be changed, but that's what the standard is. I think the best approach I must have looked at in this time would be for us to answer your questions after having heard what was said. We took notes, and so we will be prepared in whatever way to respond to the press.
I have some comments, and then I have some questions, so if y'all, possibly, so if y'all wanna build to the point. The first thing I wanna say is, for those of you who have shown up tonight to give us your opinions, I thank you for that. I attended the first public hearing last week, and the comments and concerns of those who spoke at that meeting were never acknowledged and never discussed. So I thank you for coming here tonight. In my opinion, this is the most important project this board has undertaken in my eleven years as a commissioner. And when we began this in December of 2019, I was under, excuse me, the oppression that we were gonna have in that we were going to have an ordinance that would be user-friendly. This is the document that we're talking about. This document is about two or two-and-a-half inches thick. I have read every word of this document. It has taken me a great deal of time to do so. I have read every word of this document, not once, but twice. Before I read every word of this document, as we were working and as Lee, on the document, as Lee would forward us those changes, I read those changes. I have some concerns about several issues and I'll get to that in a minute. But this affects, in my opinion, everybody who will live in Harris County, who lives in Harris County. I don't care what size they do. In some way, this is going to affect you and your life. To me, that's extremely important. In Harris County, there are thirty-three hundred parcels that are over ten acres, ten acres in a row. There are sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty parcels that are under ten acres. That's a lot of parcels. There are two hundred and fifty-four agricultural parcels. Now, those are digest categories, they're not all, possibly not all zone agriculture, that are under ten acres. Those people will be definitely affected if we pass this ten-acre parcel. There are several issues where I have concerns. One is the agricultural, the ten acres, one hundred and twenty-five-foot growth running, short-term rounds, the wineries and breweries, the PRD commercial requirements. And lastly, I need to ask a question. There is in here a section on speed tables. Can anyone tell me if this, what is in this document, mirrors the policy that we passed about two months ago regarding speeding?
I can't answer that. I would not say it mirrors, but it corresponds with.
I think there's some omissions in there that need to, yes, that need to be corrected. Because it needs to be, one, I mean, it needs to be a book document. I think there are a lot of good things in this ordinance. I think that y'all have done a lot of good work, done a lot of hard work. It's taken a long time to do it. It's taken a lot of time for this board to do it, and develop the board, planning commission, and those that have come into our steering committee, and those who've come in and had focus groups. I would like to see this table tonight and us get this right. I don't think we're there yet, that's my personal opinion. And I don't think we should pass an ordinance just to get it across the finish line yet. Only to have to come back later and change or redo some of the items in the ordinance. So I think that this should be tabled so that we have time to address the concerns and issues of those people whose lives this is going to affect. And thank you. I would like a question to table? Oh, no, not yet?
No, we haven't closed here yet.
Okay, close in here, darn.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I'd like to say that, I know that Megan brought up breweries and the brew pubs and all that. And one of the issues why it got taken out is because our alcohol ordinance does not allow it. And so we can't put it in until we change the alcohol ordinance. So to me, that alone tells us this is not ready. We need to fix the alcohol ordinance so that when we put this in and we adopt this, we're not turning around two months later and having to change it. So we already know we're going to have to change it because of an alcohol ordinance, because I think most people know that brew pubs or microbreweries, wineries, all that should go together. Then why aren't we going to do something knowing that we're going to have to change it? I think there are other, and I have a lot of other questions and issues, and I go back to what Dwight said. I don't know why, and I teach government, so I actually know why the government has the constitution and the constitution does not actually guarantee you your private rights. It actually is there to control your private rights and allow you to have the authority to come and choose. Well, that goes back to what Dwight said. With the ten acres, I don't get a chance to choose. I don't get a chance to make my choice. Constitution gives me the right to choose, but it does control the property owner's rights. It is there to give us the authority. So I think at this point in time with me, I'm not right, quite sure that we're ready to do this. And I echo what Becky said, if we're going to do it and it's going to affect thirty-five thousand people, and as most y'all know, I've been here my entire life and so has my family, and I own a good chunk of land, then we need to make sure we do it right the first time so we don't get into the situation we were in with our old ordinances and codes that brought us to disappoint. So, you know, that's all I'd say. I got a lot of other issues, but the Braves are getting ready to play, so I don't really want to go that long.
I know, just me being an engineer for as long as I have, you know, it kind of astonishes me from the county perspective, we don't have a different social media presence to be able to push this out. Days, day and time, I understand, you know, from a legal standpoint, we do the paper, we do the website. The website in itself, I'm not sure how many people actually have gone to the website and really kind of looked over it. If it is a little hard at times, it needs to be revamped. Kind of reads more like a white paper from an engineering direction type of EDC does as well. But from a social media aspect, that's where most people, good or bad, regardless of how you feel about it, is how most people ingest their information, that's where they get a lot of that communication. Columbus does it, allowing the, a lot of the governments to do that as well. So I think we do need to look at a different platform as well to encompass and incorporate into our communication from the county perspective, the county to decide to get everybody's attention to it. And I have noticed that, you know, it is, people are more passionate about this once they understand, they understand the gravity to what's going on and once they understand the meeting process and times. And I think that, you know, we do need to have some kind of meeting to where we can have it in a big, public, open forum like we did at the high school, make it to a point where everybody's up off of work. Having it at four-thirty, five o'clock, in my opinion, I've got to pick up my daughter from school, she's nine, you got to pick her up, you know, from after school, depending on what you have going on from a day-to-day process. But somewhere around six-thirty, like a meeting time would be a good time, have it open to an open forum. Let everybody, you know, hear what their opinions are because it does affect, it affects obviously the citizens of this board. So, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not comfortable with, you know, voting on this today at all myself. And I do have a lot of issues, or issues, concerns, you know, going back to, you know, just, you know, the basic stuff from, you know, the breweries, you know, to changing our alcohol ordinances. And there's some other things in there for my agritourism, you know, I would like to see this kind of re-brueled. So that's kind of my opinion as well, and the same as Becky and Rob, this affects everyone. And this is our future for Harris County, and this needs a little bit more consideration.
Like we could all basically agree that there are certain areas that we'd like to look into. This has been a long, long process. For some of you, I feel like you've been left out of the loop, and I apologize for that. If you'll go on our county website, my email address is on there. If you'll shoot me an email, I'm gladly going to give you an update, you know, communicate with you. I'm not a huge fan of social media. I mean, I get on there and everybody's fighting with social media, so I try to avoid it at all possibilities. But just want to put that out there, just harriscounty.gov, and you can find my email address on there. I think everybody could agree that this is something that we'll probably take a further look into. And I'm sorry, we can't have any more comments right now. I do have one question for you all, so if we table this tonight, what does this do for another public hearing? Can we have another public hearing on this with input from the union?
Yes, absolutely. You can always conduct a public hearing if you want to, that's within the board's discretion. I would just say from a zoning procedures law standpoint, the state law on this, if the board is entertaining any substantive change to the proposal, I would encourage another public hearing in order to ensure that we satisfy the state law on that front to avoid any procedural attacks on the backend. Because like the comments were made by board members, we don't want to cross the finish line just to have it challenged later down the road. So I personally prefer a belt and suspender approach. And so if we are going to table it and continue to work on it, I highly encourage and recommend to the board that it does conduct additional public hearings.
And if we table it, will it need a specific date?
So that's a, that is a provision in the code of ordinances for the county. You know, looking at that, you could certainly interpret it that really the purpose of having a specific date noted is to provide an applicant the ability to know when a decision is going to be made on their rezoning. So certainly could argue that that doesn't necessarily apply to the county itself because you don't have a property owner necessarily waiting in limbo while the board decides. But, you know, the most conservative approach, I would say yes, you know, go ahead and determine a date. There's nothing prevents you from taking it down the road again if you decide to.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I make a suggestion, please?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take action. Thank you, Mr. Walton, good to take this. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we table the ordinance and that we do not set a specific date because I don't think it's something we need to, I think there are a lot of things, and I failed to mention my comments, so there were a couple of things that I brought up to Ryan that were omitted that should have been completed. So we, we need to work at those also. But I would like to table this until we can work to get this through.
You have a motion?
I'll second that, as long as our attorney says we don't have to put a specific date on it.
Well, like I said, the more conservative approach would be to put a certain date on it. But I think that you don't have to because again, we're not dealing with a property owner making that application. We're dealing with the county itself. But if you want to set a date a month out, knowing that, you know, you can further table it, that's fine. Because I think the other side of the argument is the public wants to know when the decision is going to be made. And so they want to hear tonight when you're going to make it to avoid missing that. So that would be the flip side of the argument.
I would think that we would not want to do it a month out because you're going to get into Thanksgiving, Christmas, January. So if we're going to do a date, I would think the date would probably need to be set sometime in the new year just so you don't get into the public might be out holidays or whatever of that nature. That's why I asked a question. If we need a date, it probably needs to be a date that's further away than the next meeting or the next month. If we don't need a date, then I think we're good, you know, I'm okay saying that. If we need a date, then I would assume we would need to amend that motion and put a date on there where I would think we would need to decide what the date would be.
I have a question about, and I agree that we should table it, but what is the process going to be? Are we going to meet as a commission several more times with our consultant and discuss things that have come up tonight? Make some decisions about what to put in a new draft? Are we going to have a public hearing first and hear more about this document? What are we thinking as far as what our process is going to be?
I would prefer that we have a public hearing first and then we can discuss what we're going to do.
Then will we need to ask another public hearing so we can discuss those changes again? If we hear that public hearing first and then have more concerns to change it again?
We'd have to have another one. I would prefer that we, as a body, meet and discuss what we've heard tonight, make those changes, have a public hearing, share that, decide if we, I mean, we may have to have three or more public hearings, that's fine. But, you know, I've heard some things tonight that, well, I, let me go back and revisit that. And, you know, each of you probably have. And so perhaps we need to see if we can reach a consensus on amending some of this based on what we've heard, then have a public hearing, then come back together as a group and talk about that, and then maybe have another public hearing.
Can we finalize the motion and then we can decide on the process today? Unless you want, unless that has to be in the form of a motion, but it doesn't.
No, I just want to know. I mean, I just, I think the public wants to know, well, what y'all going to do? Just have another public hearing and vote and so forth?
No, I don't think, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I know, I just think they need to hear us say just what our process is going to be.
To go to your point, that would be why we don't need to put a date on this because we know we need to go more than a week or a month out.
And of course, our meeting would be a public meeting, they can come, but it wouldn't be a public hearing.
Correct.
So the public can put it first. But if we had to put a date, I would say the date could be February the first.
I kind of like the idea of giving a date because it gives us authority.
February the first would be our first meeting in February.
Are we talking about a date for a vote?
No.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
No, no, no date for a vote, just a date.
A date for a public hearing. And between now and then, we would continue to work on.
So we could table this until next next?
So the code of ordinances potently is a date certain in the future to vote on the decision whether up or down. But as I'm hearing what the board would like to do, it's not necessarily wanting to vote up or down what has been presented tonight. Instead, what it wants to do is continue to work through and then present a new product to the public. So with that, I'm sorry, okay. With that and, you know, asking about, well, how do we do this, you know, cart before the horse, you know, every time we make a change, we make, you'd have another public hearing. I suggest, I like the idea that you work through, you get a product that you believe is what you want to adopt, you notice that, you publish that to the public, you set a public hearing to discuss that product, you hear from them, from the public, but you, you know, assuming that you've gotten the product that you want to pass and you make a decision on that.
Which is, which begin from the board to me, first?
Yes.
So should, so should they disapprove the application as it is tonight?
And that was another thing that we discussed before. You can certainly go ahead and deny the presented product as is. I don't believe that that would trigger a six-month waiting period because that six-month waiting period under the state law deals with when an applicant is trying to change zoning for their property, which again, we're not doing it here. We are proposing an entirely new zoning ordinance. And also to the extent that our local code provides a twenty-four-month waiting period, well, it also has an out due, whereas the board can decide not to have that period. So long story short, that is another way to do it. You could go ahead and reject the proposal as is as you continue to work to a final product.
It would be cleaner because otherwise you're going to be posting other notices to announce another public hearing about an ongoing thing for which you've already had a public hearing. Let's close.
Sure, and I'm fine with that. Lee, do y'all have any concerns from a vote up or down tonight on what you've presented thus far?
If we do a down vote, that doesn't mean we're going to completely start over. That just means we're going to take what we have and go through what we are concerned now. now and try to put that into this and come back with, some of this may be left completely alone and then come back and say, this is what, of the concerns we've heard, this is where we are.
That's right. It, it will be a new product, but it could be ninety percent the same as what you saw tonight. Uh, it, it doesn't mean that it's gone forever. So you're absolutely right.
Then if you want to rescind your motion?
Yes, I will rescind my motion.
Okay. So we have a new question?
And I'll raise a motion that, uh, we deny this proposal.
I'll say.
Yeah, a motion to the second. I'll listen to it.
Then I think now we need to get, now right now at this moment in time, uh, but I think we need to decide our process of what we as commissioners should be to go through all these concerns, make sure we're doing that. I think we'll, I think sure we have, uh, Russell, Randy, and everybody, if, if everybody we need to present at that time, then come back with that.
Uh, we do have a need for a second session tonight, so I'll make a motion for a second session.
For location personnel.
Or, yeah. You got a motion?
Thank you guys so much.